God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for another day of life. As we meet today, we're mindful of those that are struggling in our community right now. The many that are out of work, the businesses that are struggling to stay open, those that are essential workers working on the front lines, doing everything they can to keep us safe, doing what they can to keep businesses open. We pray, God, that you be with each and every one of them, encourage, strengthen, and Lord will just continue to trust you. We ask that you continue to have your blessings upon our community. Help those that are sick, be with those families that are affected, be with our leaders as they make important decisions to guide and direct, and be with us today and give divine wisdom where it's needed. And we'll ask you these things in the precious name of Jesus, and everybody sit.
Amen. Thank you. Mike, thank you.
All right. With that, we'll open up our meeting, April 21st meeting of the Commissioners of Sauter County, Board of County Commissioners. And could we get a motion to approve the minutes of April the 7th?
So moved.
Fourteenth.
Sorry.
April fourteenth, sorry.
So moved.
I'll second.
Mr. Crabtree.
Aye.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In a matter of request for appropriation transfer of funds.
Are there any questions or comments in regards to item two? Hearing none?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Or Mr. Crabtree, sorry. I'm messing up all over the place here. Mr. Crabtree.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye. We kind of get out of practice when you're with, we're kind of, we're used to meeting twice a week. And of course, with the COVID, we've backed that down to once a week. But it's, I think, we'll blame it on that, okay? We'll blame it on the coronavirus, all right? Very good.
Okay, number three, in a matter of approving payment of the regular scheduled accounts for the various funds, moral obligations, and the den now certificates in a total amount of $239,461.53.
Any questions or comments in regards to item three? Hearing none?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Crabtree.
Aye.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In a matter of approving payment to the county risk sharing authority for program year 2020 to 2021 in a total amount of $354,489.
Any questions or comments in regards to item four? Hearing none?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Crabtree.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In a matter of notification from the Ohio Department of Taxation regarding permissive sales tax for February 2020.
Questions or comments in regards to item five? Hearing none?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Mr. Crabtree.
Aye.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In a matter of accepting miscellaneous notices and reports.
Questions or comments in regards to item six? Hearing none?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Crabtree.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In a matter of communication from Access Sauter County regarding appointments to the Access Sauter County Advisory Board.
Questions or comments in regards to item seven? Hearing none?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Crabtree.
Aye.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In my request for appropriation of funds.
Questions or comments in regards to item eight? Hearing none?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Crabtree.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In a matter of approving programmatic agreement for the coordination between the Board of Sauter County Commissioners and the Ohio State Historic Preservation Office regarding various grant funds.
And are there any questions or comments in regards to item nine? Hearing none?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Crabtree.
Aye.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In a matter of resolution authorizing Darren McGron, EPS Sauter County Engineer, to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission's state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs and to execute contracts as required for the 2020 Sauter County Township improvements.
Are there any questions or comments in regards to item 10? Hearing none?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Crabtree.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In a matter of resolution authorizing Darren McGron, EPS Sauter County Engineer, to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission's state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs and to execute contracts as required for the 2020 Sauter County Joint Project.
Are there any questions or comments in regards to item 11? Hearing none?
Motion to adopt.
I'll second.
Mr. Crabtree.
Aye.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Okay. Mrs. Coleman, would you have anything additional?
I have nothing at this time.
And Mr. Crabtree, would you have anything at this time?
I have nothing.
All right. Before we go to, well, we're going to go to questions from the press. I don't know if we have any yet or not, Brian, okay? We have Larry Mullins with us, the Deputy Director of EMA, is in the building with us today. And if there's any questions directly.
Everything is directed toward you guys so far.
Okay, all right. Larry, you're on hold right now, okay? All righty. So let's, are there any questions on anything on the agenda?
On the agenda, yes. Mr. Show would like number four and number nine.
Number four and number nine. Number four, Sauter County, well, this is, this is our total payment to Corso for Corso coverage, okay? And it's broken down by department. This is our insurance, and it is total due of $354,489. And the other one is what, nine? Okay, programmatic agreement with the Ohio State Historic Preservation Office. And this is for the administration of programs using HUD allocated funds with delegated review authority. Those are review responsibilities authorized under 24 CFR Part 58 and will continue in full force until December 31st, 2024. So basically, they, they do have oversight authority with those programs.
It's mostly our chip program. It, we have to go through the Historical Society every time that we do anything with the House through our chip program, so they give us, they'll go ahead and say that that's not a historical site that we're working on.
If it is, there's certain criteria that has to be met. We do the same thing with Land Bank, we have to go through Ohio Historical Society. Anything, I forget the year, but they have to make sure that some famous president didn't live there, something like that, before we go to change the structure in any way. All right.
Mr. Show, you guys have a question from Mr. Mullins now. Do you like to know if you're happy with the levels of testing available at Sauter County?
I think I know the answer.
Good morning. I don't think anybody's happy with the level of testing. The, your primary testing's being done by Southern High Medical Center and also King's Daughters. And even though they have the machine read that could actually turn out these tests within 45 minutes, they don't have what's called reagent for them. And which basically interacts with the patient's blood to see if the virus is present. In fact, they have, SOMC I know has over 50 of these machines, the Abbott machines. And if they had the reagent now, they did get some test kits in, they got 26 test kits. However, to basically one of the machines that they would be using this as, it takes 20 test kits to basically set up the machine and make sure that it's in the testing rooms. And then you have to use two test kits a day to make sure it continues to stay within specs. So basically, they still have no test kits. So, but I don't think anybody's happy with the amount of testing. I think less, nationwide, less than 1%. And until we really get good testing, we're not, we don't have good numbers.
That was one of the frustrating things when I was watching the President's news conference yesterday. He was talking about, or he wasn't one of the women in the room. One of his experts was talking about, we have all these, all these testing, we have the testing capabilities, we have all these machines, but we don't have what we need in order to run the machines. But they weren't really focused on that. They were saying, oh, yeah, we got all this testing equipment, and this could be, no, it's not working. It's not right. So what they're being told.
It's like having a Porsche with no gas.
Unfortunately, yeah, unfortunately, at a higher level, they're, they assume, and this, this happens all the time, and we run into this all the time. And so do our congressmen. Our congressmen, it's frustrating when, you know, you pass legislation, and at the higher level, at the federal level, they think things are happening at the local level. But by the time it trickles down to the local level, it gets past the state, it's not happening like they think it's happening or being told that it's supposed to happen. And, you know, that's why it's so important for us to have our conversations with our federal and state leaders right now. And we're having those conversations is that they need that feedback, and they need to hear that things are not happening like they think they are. And we've been doing that, it's just, it's.
And, and I would say to our local officials and also our state and federal officials, been trying their best to get this reagent for the hospitals. And it's, unfortunately, it comes from China, most of it. And once again, that seems to be the bad answer to every question.
Yeah. Yeah, seems, seems to be. If that's one lesson that's learned from this, it's the fact that we have to eliminate our dependence on other countries in matters, especially like this, that are life and death situations. Our healthcare should be treated very much like our military. And it should be done here at home.
I agree.
Okay.
That was the only question.
Okay. I'd like to make a statement.
Yes, please.
As we prepare for recovery and reopening, Sauter County EMA continues to identify, monitor, respond to COVID hotspots in our area, along with our healthcare partners. We have a strong focus on the long-term care facilities and, of course, the incarcerated populations. Fortunately, here in Sauter County, we only have one facility that has had a outbreak of COVID. And that has been limited to the staff, not the population. And they are trying their best to make sure they're quarantining people. Two, two of the folks that tested positive, there's also four others that their tests haven't come back yet. But behind the scenes, there's a lot of ramping up, trying to get ready to help our nursing care facilities to be ready. Because those are the people that are, you know, at most risk during this outbreak.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everything is directed towards you, Paul. Second over here, Mr. Evans.
All right, first we have Sin Mackley, Sauter County Daily News. I've talked to a lot of people who have nothing but praise for the way EMA Director Carver and Deputy Director Mullins have handled this crisis. We already had a pretty good pandemic plan in place. But if it's not too soon, is there anything the Commissioners think we can learn from this crisis that would make us better prepared for future emergencies?
I can take lead on that, and then you all, please, comment. You know, I, I still go back, and Larry, you'll know exactly what I'm talking about when we did our threat assessment. We, we sat in a room, and it was early this year when we started working on that new threat assessment. Infectious disease was very low on that, that totem pole, it really was. You know, we looked at spring storms, we looked at winter storms, we looked at windstorms. You know, we've had those derechoes that have just torn up our forests and everything else and caused a lot of damage, property damage. We looked at a lot of the obvious things because honestly, other than the H1N1, the bird flu, I think it was 2009, that, yes, we had in this area, but we had Tamiflu, we had medicines that helped people overcome that. We had never faced a pandemic since 1918, and nobody, very few people alive even remember that. And there may be a small handful in Portsmouth that would remember and would have been a child at the time. So I guess the lesson learned is, is when we do our threat assessments, if we were to do it today, it would be at the top of the list, you know? So we don't, I guess it'd be, never assume that any one particular thing can't happen just like that. And for the, for us, that's what happened. Even though we had, and Larry can attest to this, and fellow Commissioners, we had warning, we started preparing, the county prepared, EMA, and I agree, we heap praise on, on what Ms. Carver and Mr. Mullins has done, the work, the preparation, the hours, not just EMA, but the hospitals, the county, township, state, the cooperation. You know, we didn't talk about SOCF, we discussed it before the meeting about, you know, how things are at Southern High Correctional Facility. But we also have two other correctional facilities in Sauter County. We have STAR, Community Justice Center, and then we also have Sauter County Sheriff's Office. We have been very blessed. We have, the fact that we haven't had the problems that Marion, you know, some of these other correctional facilities have had, Pickaway, my goodness, I mean, it's just been terrible so far. We have, we dodged a bullet there, but I think that's one of, the lesson learned is, is we really, when we look at these, the, there's no harm in preparing to the extreme on PPE. My goodness, I mean, here we are. I mean, I'm, I'm wearing a homemade mask, you're wearing a homemade mask. We're, we don't have N95s, we don't have the equipment, so we need to look further out. Problem is, a lot of PPE has expiration dates, so if you spend that money, it's a catch-22. I, I think that's one of the major lessons to be learned. We're, I, I think another lesson learned in a positive way, and I don't know if it's learned, it's, it's more, I will say it's been reinforced, is that the spirit of our community is so strong. The fact that there's people out there sewing masks for people they don't even know. But they're, they're out there doing work and finding ways to protect. And our, our whole community's been transformed in a very short period of time. You go to a fast food restaurant, you see shields that have been put up. You go to Walmart, and there's big giant plexiglass shields to protect the face-to-face. And I, I think the spirit of our community's been reinforced. And that isn't so much a lesson learned, but maybe a lesson realized and reinforced just to see how strong our community is and how resilient our community is. And to see how great of people we have that really are on the front lines and working so hard. We have, we have a lot of people hurting today. It's one of the hardest things that we deal with, is, we were talking this morning, you know, everybody's getting emails, everybody's getting texts, everybody's getting phone calls about people that haven't got their unemployment in place yet. They haven't got their first payment even, their first check. We have businesses that are, their business is down 80% or more, or they've closed, or you have businesses waiting on the promissory grants or loans in order to, you know, to keep open. And they haven't gotten those monies yet. They're, they're struggling, they're literally right on the cusp of making decisions to close because they are, they're right there, where they can't just sustain it anymore. Receivables aren't enough to cover it. So receivables or reserves for that matter. So you had some companies that were just struggling to exist before all this even happened. So I, I think, you know, we, we need to be aware that there's a lot of hurting people right now. And lesson learned for me there is that being prepared for that part of it. Our system was overwhelmed, I say our system, the, the state's system was overwhelmed. We know that, and it's still not really where it needs to be. I think one of the lessons learned there is, and we have, we have learned it, how does job family services, how does the unemployment office, how does, how do all these services move fast enough to help people in, in case of a crisis like this? Thank goodness this doesn't happen every week. I'm praying this isn't the new normal. You know, I keep on hearing that term. I, I just reject that. I don't, I don't want it to be the new normal. I want to get past this and, and start growing again. That's just, that's just me talking. I, I believe that with God's help and a lot of prayer and a lot of people very, you know, continuing to be vigilant and doing the social distancing and doing all that, we will turn a corner on this thing eventually. But I, I think preparedness, even though we, we do hyper-preparedness anyways, this one we wasn't, I don't think we were fully prepared for. And even though we're prepared for windstorms, we're prepared for things that happen all the time, so we're prepared for those. We're prepared for putting floodgates in if the river rises. I mean, they're trained, and they do mock, mock drills to do it every two, I think it's every two years, Larry, isn't it? They do that, they, they already know how to do it. This one, it was a silent invasion. And, and we've got to get as a country, as a state, as a county, we need to prepare better for this kind of an event. And I think we'll get there, but who could have seen this coming the way it did? And I guess that's just something that we'll have to deal with in the future, and we're dealing with it now, but we'll get there. So, good question, good question. Kathy, do you have?
The, the only thing I might add is, you know, as you said, infectious disease was so far down the list, it's nothing we've ever encountered in our lifetimes. But I think that a lesson learned is just being mentally prepared for what we've endured. It was just like being hit with a bomb. And now that we know that, you know, the worst horrible thing can happen, I think that in the future, we'll all be, you're never going to accept it or, or really be, but you'll be mentally prepared so that you can, you know what to do, you know what your next step. The offices go on, they start working from home, all these things are put in, already in place. And, and as you said, with, with the way this happened, I, I'm really proud of how our county jumped in there and did all the things they needed to do to keep, to keep going. And so, but I, I just think that we'll, you know, with this, with the way this happened, I will, you know, I think we all will, I don't think, I don't think we'll ever be really to go back to the old normal, just for the sake of what, what we've gone through, so.
From a personal standpoint, you know, I, I've worked a lot of my life. From the time I was 15 years old, I've, I've worked many times when I was working from paycheck to paycheck. You know, we all understand the importance and the severity of the coronavirus, but we also understand that, and I think now the state of Ohio and the federal government are seeing that there is no way that they can take the sting out of this from an economical standpoint, from people that live paycheck to paycheck. And there's no way that the state of Ohio or the federal government can write checks on a weekly basis. And I, I don't think that if you're going to have the country shut down indefinitely like that, the long-term effects of this are going to be not only hurting individuals, but it's going to be rough on the state of Ohio, the federal government, and local governments to recover from a financial standpoint. You know, this is something that was sprung on us on a moment's notice, basically. You know, one day we were going to a restaurant and life was normal, the next day, everything changed. And the bad thing about it is, is the ones that are hurt the most are the ones that, you know, have very serious issues going on as far as trying to make their car payments, their house payments, and everything else, when they don't even know when they're going to get another check. And I can tell you that one stimulus check or two, if you're shut down for month after month after month, is not going to solve the problem.
All right, Brian? Bear with him, he's trying to, he's trying to cipher through all the, all the questions that are showing up on the social media.
And at the same time, trying to control the camera.
I understand.
I apologize.
While he's looking there, I will point out one thing, and I, you hesitate to point this out because we're not exactly sure where this roller coaster's going to lead us. We got our permissive sales tax report today, and it's sobering because we were climbing, we were climbing. This, and this, I know the press always asks about this, so I'll go ahead and go ahead and bring this up. Permissive sales tax for February 2020, sales local was 581, 631, 85. Sales actual was 290, 787, 55, for a total of 872, 419, 40. That was for February 2020. That is an increase of 71,672 from February 2019. Year-to-date, as of February, we were up $338,432.31. So the county was heading in the right direction. And this was the kind of things that we talked about publicly in, in this meeting, was in regards to with the internet sales tax, that Mike, Mike was very important on that as far as lobbying at the state level, getting that all set up and fixed so it's fair across the board, across all 50 states. And, and Ohio finally got that all taken care of so that those sales tax revenues weren't being lost. But we were actually heading in the right direction. And it's going to be interesting to see what happens when we get March numbers next month. Will it show the impact in March? It may start to show because the time that the counties, states started shutting down, businesses started shutting down, I think our first real impact will show when we get our report in June. I think, I think, which will be April's numbers. I think that'll be the big, that'll be the one that'll really show us just how much of an impact this had on the county. But the good news is, is that once the state starts to open up, and Governor Guinan has talked about doing that, I know that there's a lot of debate about that right now about how, is it too early to do so? I, I tend to think that there needs to be a responsible approach to that. We've talked with doctors, our health commissioner, we've talked to others about the importance of this being done responsibly and that there is a plan to do that. I think keeping the schools shut down was a good idea, I really do. I think that was one of the major spreaders, it always has been. Flu is always spread throughout the community, usually between the kids and the kids to go home, you know, or vice versa. So, but we'll see, we'll see what happens with our tax revenue. And of course, the sales tax revenue is a major funder for county government. So, so we'll see. You ready?
Okay. I'm not sure how or why, but a couple of the comments have disappeared. I know there was one more question from Sin Mackley. It was directed towards Mike about his concern about the economy and where you think everything stands now with the governor opening back up. So I think you may have commented on that already in your previous statements.
And then I just did, about the governor. It's not there now?
Yeah, so, it, it's not, I'm not sure. I had to reopen the app, and sometimes weird things happen. But I think I still have everyone else's questions.
Okay, so Sauter County Daily News still needs that answer. Type that back in if you're listening. Go ahead and do that, please.
I apologize for that.
Yeah, don't know.
I remember.
Technology's great when it works, so, so that's fine.
So we, we do have Betty Smith from Sauter County Daily News asking, the ODNR was supposed to assign you a liaison to give regular updates on the progress of the golf course remodel. Have they stopped work, or are they just not reporting the progress?
I think both, actually. I think both, actually. We, when we last met with them, they said that there was, they were in the permitting process on a lot of things. If you go down there, you'll see that there's a lot of work that's been done in the ponds, what's called the, I think it's the Water Sports Lagoon or something like that. That's what they're calling it officially. You'll go down there and you'll see where they've combined a lot of the ponds. A lot of their work has ceased because of the COVID crisis. And also, they're not saying this, but I would imagine that the permitting process and everything else has been slowed down. I'm, that's a guess. But when we talked to them last, they asked if it would be okay if they could come back in May and give us an update because of everything being bogged down like it is. That they really didn't think there would be very much to report, and we agreed to do that. So, there really isn't a whole lot to report right now because the state has basically ceased a lot of their operations. They're working from home, I know that for a fact, and a lot of the state offices are. So, we apologize that we don't really have an update this month, but we will be having an update next month. And maybe with the state opening up gradually, they'll have something to report to us. It's unfortunate, I will say this, that what they were doing down there got bogged down, no pun intended, because of all the rain. The equipment was getting in there and they were just, they weren't able to do what they really wanted to do because of all the early rain we got this spring. So, hopefully it'll get back on track. What that looks like, we'll find out.
Before I ask the next question, Ms. Tina Jenkins replied to the question. Here is the question. I can see her reply, I still can't see the question.
Who's Tina? Tina Jenkins is with?
Scioto Daily News.
Scioto County Daily News. Oh, okay, yeah.
Just making her aware, like, I can see her replying to it, but I, for whatever, okay.
All right.
"I had asked Commissioner Crabtree about his original concerns about shutting down the state. A month down the line, does he still think it was an overreaction? Has he been convinced it was necessary? Could more moderate measures have been tried? Or is there just no way we'll ever know if it's the right call?"
Well, if you, if you have been listening to the news, you'll notice that what I've said all along and what I heard Ben Carson say, I think a couple of days ago, he made the remark that if you wait until the coronavirus is completely gone, then everything's going to be completely gone, including the economy. And I think if you've been listening to some of the governors, they're pretty much echoing what I, I said early on, that, you know, you can't, without some kind of plan, you can't shut the economy down entirely and not, not have a plan in place as to how you're going to take care of the people that's affected the worst by that. There are some people that worked, I know myself, I, you know, I, I grew up in a family that didn't have a great deal of money and we, we had to work for a living. And, and back in the day, if you worked a job in the private sector, you were expected to be there, sick or well. And many times in my early career, I, I worked when I, you know, I absolutely was sick as a dog. And I, I did that because, not because I didn't know I shouldn't have been there, I did it because I had to have that paycheck. Because my bills kept coming in regardless of whether I was sick or not. And a lot of people are in that position today. And I know a lot of people like that. And, you know, I know how serious this Corona thing is. I know a lot of people don't seem to realize that, you know, this is a double-edged sword. We all are very well aware of the seriousness of this. We're also very well aware of the seriousness of being unemployed, you know, when the suicide rate's up 30% and people are dying from drug overdoses and, and suicide and things like that because they don't know which way to turn. And I can tell you that even one or two stimulus checks are not going to solve a problem for people who's three months out of work. And I, you know, I have my own personal feelings, I have my own personal opinion, but we as commissioners have decided that, you know, we're going to support the governor and the president in whatever decisions they make concerning this. But again, I would caution anybody that's involved in government that has the ability to make those decisions to figure out how they're going to solve, you know, the repercussions, the problems from the repercussions that's going to come from all of this. And I can tell you from an economical standpoint, my prediction now is that this is going to affect the government, it's going to affect a lot of taxpayers for a whole lot of years when this is all through. So, do I have the answer? No, I, I don't have the answer. But I do have my own personal feelings about this. Those aren't going to change.
Sorry, I got a corner of my eye.
You're observing the six-foot distance?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Betty Smith again, Scioto County Daily News. "School has been officially called for the year. We've noted some of the schools have become complacent with their promised food delivery services. What would you tell the school boards about ensuring the promised nutrition arrives to the vulnerable children in need?"
Could you repeat the first part of that again?
Yes. What would you tell the school boards about ensuring the promised nutrition arrives? Or, "Some of the schools have become complacent with their promised food delivery services."
Okay. I, I'll be honest with you, we had not heard that, unless you have, that there were schools that had been, become complacent. I'm not really sure who those schools are. It would be interesting to know who those are and find out the reasons why. I'm not really 100% certain who those are and what the reasons may be, whether it's the volunteers, you know, shortage of volunteers, I, I don't know. But I guess what we would say is, we would encourage them to keep that up. That is one concern I have is, is that, are we continuing this up? And that was something I thought of yesterday whenever Governor DeWine mentioned this. And this is a real problem anyways, that, and I know Head Start, CIO, they do the summer feed programs. I know what the Power Pack program, that Mark and Virgie Hunter, what they do, they're just amazing people. This is another clarion call, wake-up call for our community. When this all happened, you know, the schools, God bless our schools, our, our workers, the bus drivers, what they have done. The other, 14th Street Community Center, CIO, the, the different agencies, and I, I can't, you know, name them all, but there's so many people doing this that have really gone over and above and beyond. Potter's House, Sciotoville, I mean, they're everywhere. They've gone so far, the food banks to help people. The concern I have is this, with the shortage of, of payroll, you know, people not getting their income. And we already know that there's an issue with our children, and this is, this is a discussion we have with Children's Services, the director the other day, the interim director, is, you know, the concern about the kids being fed beyond the school year. You know, school lets out at the end of May, normally, that's going to happen. Governor's still trying to unfold all that out and let the schools know exactly how everything's going to work here. But what about after that? And we've always known that there is that, that period of time from the time that the schools let out and the kids go back, you know, go home for the summer. We know that there's children, and this is so sad to say, and it's so hard to know that these things are happening. And, and God bless the ones that are doing the summer feeding programs and everything else. But, you know, we're, we're going to have kids thrown into probably a worse situation than they were in before with this. We know that there's adults out there that, that don't feed their kids properly, that they misappropriate monies and they use those monies on other things. We know that that segment of the population exists. And then we also now have a situation where you have parents that were working that aren't working. So, I think the food banks are still going to be necessary. I don't know what the schools are going to do, if they're going to continue that, if they're going to be given funding to do that. How, how does a school district make up that gap? You know, I, I, those are questions that we're asking now at the state level. Is that going to be possible? Can those, are they sustainable? You know, these volunteers, God bless their hearts, they've done this for over a month now, but is it sustainable? And how do we take care of these kids? Lesson learned. That was an early question. Here's a lesson that's been learned. It's like, what do we do now? And how does, how does that, how does the county come into that? Is it a state-funded program? Is a new program need to develop? I don't, these are, these are questions that need answered. It's, it's an excellent question. I can't answer the merits of the question based upon, I don't, I don't know the facts about some becoming complacent. I don't know about that. But it did open up, what do we do now across the board? Because one or two agencies can't handle it all. There's too many kids. And I think the problem is, has been increased. I think it's going to be more, as you said, sir. You, you, you've got families that are, they don't have their incomes, and there's no amount of checks that are going to make up. Well, if the government did that, but they're not doing that. And, and they just voted on a stimulus yesterday that it's going to help businesses, it's going to help hospitals, which, that's another issue. We have hospitals that are on the verge of financial collapse as a result of this. But the checks, you know, they're not, they're not voting on more checks for people. And, and we know what that does. I mean, when you, when you do that, the taxpayers are the ones that are going to take the chimp, take it on the chimp. But at the same time, we're, we're a country of compassion, we're a country of, of helping others. And, 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 you know, matter of fact, the Bible talks about, you know, for those that have, and, and don't give, how dwelleth the love of God in you if you don't. So that's, that's in, in the Bible. You know, we're taught that we're supposed to give. And we have the most generous community anywhere, I believe, in the United States. And they are giving. How sustainable is it? We gotta, how do we keep that going? And what does that look like? I think unfortunately, as a result of this crisis, a lot of our children are, are going to take it hard. And we gotta figure out a way to, to protect them. And like I said, God bless the ones that have just really went above and beyond. My goodness, I, I, you watch and you talk to people, get up early to go feed and, you know, make sure the kids have food and stuff like that. Good question, solid question. And if, if we know who those people are, we'll, we'll definitely check in with them, you know, and ask them if they need help. Because we want to make sure the kids get taken care of. Anything else?
Betty Smith again. "It has been stated, some states are doing better than others and some counties and states are better than others. Does this give Scioto County hope of going through some phases sooner than expected?"
Some phases? Say it again. I'm sorry.
"Some states are doing better than others, some counties and states are doing better than others. Does this give Scioto County hope of going through some phases sooner than expected?"
Some phases? I, I, I guess she's probably talking about phase one, phase two, phase three. It, it depends on what the governor says. That, that's really what it's all about. I mean, we're, we're looking at phase one, May 1st. My understanding is that phase two kicks in two weeks later, and then two weeks after that, phase three. We really have to act upon the orders of the, the Director of Health and the governor. Will they, you know, look, we have six cases. Do we have more? Probably. The reason we don't know is because we don't have the testing. They're finding that all across the country, too. We were just talking about that this morning, about LA County and how they found 70% of the people in the county have had it, they're asymptomatic. You know, there's a great debate. Have we already had it? Did we have it back in November, December? We talked about this. There were so many sick people that weren't, that were getting tested. Flu A, flu B, no. What did they have? They may have had this. We don't know. But really, we can't, I'll give you an example. When the governor says to open up the parks, we never closed Darryl Thompson County Park, but we did take down the basketball rims. We did it regrettably. We, we just like, we was hoping it wouldn't be abused. It ended up being abused. We took them down. But we closed the playground immediately because that was clarified right off the bat. We won't open that back up until they tell us to because we have to rely on the, the Director of Health and their expertise and what they know, what they're seeing, the trending. Are we doing better than most counties? The numbers say we are. Our hospital isn't overran. You know, our ICU unit isn't pressed. It looks on the surface like we're doing better, but I don't think we're going to be given preferential treatment or we're going to be able to move faster than the rest of the state unless we're told that we can. I, I don't know, sir. I, I think that's pretty much.
Well, I think what the governor does is he looks at the, he looks at the state as a whole.
Yeah.
So when he, when he, he can't issue separate directives for every single county. There's 88 counties, and I think he's, he's going to look at the state as a whole. That would be my opinion. And, you know, whatever he decides to do, we're going to be compelled to do that. But again, you know, who knows what tomorrow will bring.
Yeah, things change on a dime on this thing. I mean, it's like, I, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure where Marion County was, but before they started testing the prison, but as soon as they tested the prison, they jumped up over 2,000 cases and now have more cases than any other county. Little rural Marion County, smaller than us, has more cases than any other county because of the prison. That could happen at SOCF. Let's pray it doesn't happen. But what if it does? Then all of a sudden, we're, we're over 1,000 and, we're looked at in a different light all of a sudden. So, there's just so many unknowns with this. And everybody's doing their best to keep it together right now, to keep everything operating and so that we have a foundation to open back up with. You know, that's it. I mean, we gotta have that foundation in place. But another good question, I, I just don't think that anybody really knows until we get more of a direction. And maybe, you know, the other thing is, is we have to see a drop in cases. I believe that's one of the criteria. We have to see a, a decline in order for us to open up. Yeah, we're there, but the rest of the states, that's not happening. And it's mainly because of the testing. The, the testing is expanding. Testing the prisons, that's really the big jump right now. So, we, we just don't know. We pray and hope that it can happen faster, but I just don't see it right now. Anything else?
It's funny you mention testing in prison. Tina Jenkins, "With no testing available, how do we know there isn't any in our prison?"
Well, great question. Larry and I was talking about this before the meeting. We just had a brief conversation about SOCF. The last I heard, they had one potential that they had in quarantine. I guess the best way is the fact that we're not seeing the symptoms. But Larry, maybe you can discuss that.
It's not that no testing is available. There is testing available, it just takes a long time. The state prison system would send that to ODH. If they had somebody they thought was symptomatic, they would put them in quarantine, test them. So it's not that there is no testing going on. It's just taking, which has improved. It was taking up to 14, 15 days. Now they have turnarounds of two to three days.
Right.
So it's not that there's no testing going on. So, they are testing.
We had an interesting discussion, Larry and I did before the meeting, about the difference between Marion, Pickaway, SOCF, Southern High Correctional Facility, and the way they house their inmates. If you look at the chart, I think, I've seen it out there. Matter of fact, I think I've seen it on Scioto County Daily News, they've actually posted on there, about the prisons and how many cases they have. But the dormitory, how they're housed, and I don't know if that's the difference between minimum security, you know, and maximum security prisons, but the ones where it seems like the cases are the highest are where they're in groups or pods. Where SOCF historically has always been a maximum security prison, so they are in cells. So there is a division, there is a dividing. And they are not let out of their cells as often as what they are in a minimum security prison. That may be the difference here, is that for all intents and purposes, SOCF, being locked down in SOCF is not abnormal. down in SOCF is not abnormal. And when this all started, and I, I was talking to a corrections officer, they locked it down. I mean, they, their warden was very proactive and got ahead of this right off the bat and really has been praised because they didn't mess around. So maybe that's the difference. Time will tell. Again, time will tell. I, I think if, uh, there was a, a major concern, they'd get in there and test everybody if they, you know, and they may be in the process of doing that. But SOCF is part of the, uh, the planning at EMA. Has been part of this from day one, so, as well as STAR and Sheriff's Office and others, they're, they're all part of this. And, uh, it could just be like, uh, Commissioner Coleman said, that, you know, our citizens got involved right off the bat and started taking protective measures and started doing the things that were being asked of them, the social distancing, things like that, which is very hard to do in a prison, very hard to do in a prison. But maybe that's why they've been successful to date, and we haven't seen, and pray that we don't, we don't. Because of all, you know, you have the inmates, but then you've got all the hundreds of employees that work there, um, that, you know, we don't want them exposed. But they, if you look at the incubation period, that was the other thing, you know, if you look at the incubation period from the onset of this thing to now, it would have passed if they locked down four weeks ago. So hopefully that had a major impact, and we're not, we're just not seeing the sickness to date. So let's pray that it stays that way. Good question. Is that it? All right?
We have bid opening, so we really can't take any questions.
Yes, we have a bid opening in, in four minutes, and we're going to stay on here. Larry, thank you. Uh, tell, tell Ms. Carver we said hi. Doing a wonderful job over there, getting information out. Six cases so far.
That's right.
That's what we have, and that's been status quo for a few days now, actually. Uh, there was some confusion. Uh, ODH put some numbers in our numbers that weren't ours. They were actually Marion, former Scioto County residents, now are guests of the State of Ohio in Marion. But, uh, we are.
Thank you, Larry.
At six, and so far, so good. So, uh, we'll, uh, we'll wait here in three minutes, so. Do what you want to. That's fine.